All right, rise and shine, 7:00 AM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, everyone's here besides Joel Lynn? Let's stand for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, we only have one item on the agenda as far as I'm aware, unless you have anything else to add, Job?
Uh, we can't because of special needs.
All right, that answers that. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And the motion, Rodney will second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Most repairs. We have one agenda. Consideration to approve the fiscal year '27 list of reductions for a total of $700,000.
At the last, uh, regular board meeting, the school board directed administration to come up with $700,000 worth of cuts and bring them back for approval. And again, the reason for doing it at this point, and these are for FY '27 cuts, so not for this current year, but for the following fiscal year. Uh, we need to, uh, be transparent and get the cuts out ahead of the, uh, vote when that begins for absentee valuing on September 19th. So the idea would be to have an approved list of reductions for, uh, this upcoming election time so that people understand what is at stake here. And so, without further ado, uh, administration did take a list of expenditures to cut to the finance committee meeting last Friday, where there was a very healthy discussion around these items. And ultimately, the finance committee decided to pass on this list with potential discussion around one other item, which is a four-period date. And so, I can go through the list here and then the board can commence discussions around that. And I'll clarify as much as I can as I'm going through this list here of cuts. Uh, the first one is a 1.0 elementary FIED teacher. Uh, this would cut us down to the state minimum requirements for FIED. And, uh, we would not be getting all-day, everyday FIED anymore. It would be, uh, probably about every other day or so of FIED. Uh, there would be a first-grade teacher section that would be cut. Would go from four sections down to three sections. Uh, the total class sizes as it would sit today would put us on the high end of the recommended, uh, numbers per class in first grade. Uh, the next one would be a second-grade teacher. Uh, this would put us, this would go from four sections down to three sections as well. And this would put us, uh, just outside of the recommended numbers that we have on our recommendation sheet for class sizes. Uh, secretary restructure. Uh, we would reduce one secretary, uh, out of the total of four that we have. We currently have two in each building. We would reduce one, um, and then have the other second one, uh, travel back and forth between the buildings, working on various assigned items, but mainly being a district cashier to help with, um, the intake of money within the offices. Um, 1.0 access teacher in the secondary access is a support for students in need of extra help. We originally had a grant for this, and we have to cash flow the first year of that grant, but we could not find a teacher for that. So we are foregoing that. And we had already, um, had plans to, to put this into the budget for this year, and so we are taking it back out for the following year. Uh, we will be reducing a sixth assignment art that we currently have, which is an elective. It's not a required art. We would reduce 1.0 food service restructure, um, within the either building. Lori would make that work. 1.0 district-wide paraprofessional. Because paraprofessionals are reimbursed at two-thirds rate, uh, that's the reason why the number is, uh, just under $8,000 there. We would eliminate or charge for in-town transportation. And, uh, so what we mean by eliminating, uh, the school district is required to, uh, transport kids outside of the two-mile radius. And so, we would either stop the in-town pickups when buses come in, and parents would have to figure out a way to get their child to school, either by driving them themselves or somebody else, or having them walk. Or we would charge, uh, for in-town transportation for the year. Area schools do, or have been starting to charge for in-town transportation. Uh, so this isn't the first that, uh, we wouldn't be the first school in that area to start doing that. The next two items are reductions in supply budgets for these different areas. We would have 5% in our general overall supply budget and 5% for instruction supply budget. And then a 10%, uh, supply budget for the bus garage and operation supply budget reduction. Uh, the activity fee increase, the, uh, for this coming year, or for this year currently, we had a pretty big increase from last year to this year. And then we would be increasing that again up to $200, uh, total for FY '27. We'd remove the family cap on that as well. We would start charging senior citizens for student admission. Currently, they are getting in free. Um, and we would start charging them in student rate. Uh, fall musical would move to community ed, much like the spring play is now. That would move from the, uh, Fund One, general fund, to, uh, Fund Four, community ed, be funded that way. We will increase the rentals at the CCC again. Uh, this was the first year for this current year that we did have rentals for the senior center. Uh, we would essentially, uh, add another $1,000 a month onto the cost of that and increase other people's rent as well that use the CCC. There'd be a $5, or $5, 5% overall facility rental fee increase for the one-offs that come in and rent our, uh, facility. We would increase the season pass price. We would return, uh, students to having to pay for entrance into activities. If you remember, that was, uh, taken away during COVID. The next one, we would be charging for live streaming for our events, so there'd be no more free live streaming. We would reduce golf coaches from four to three. Horsey and JV Golf non-conference, we would have to be at a same-day, same-location. Uh, currently, uh, some of them split and go to different locations on the same day. This would be more efficient transportation-wise. Uh, we would limit travel for non-conference junior high games. Uh, the idea would be to stay within approximately 30 miles of cannonballs for junior high events to reduce transportation. We would have a 1.0 custodian reduction. Currently, um, we've had this in the budget, but we haven't hired it over the summer since the last time we lost a custodian. And so, this should be, I mean, it's never easy, but, uh, we haven't, we wouldn't have to, uh, let somebody go for that position. And then finally, uh, the energy dollars that the school district has been, uh, reserving for facility use. Uh, these are general operating dollars, and, uh, those would be put back into, uh, general operating use and cover some of the cuts as well. The grand total is $702,893.40.
This is a fun way to start out the week.
Yeah.
I don't know if a Friday would have been better or not. Uh, well, I think we'll start off with the top with any, um, any questions. Um, Mr. Strauss, can we get an idea? I know we're talking on the top side of class sizes for first and second grade. Where would those numbers currently sit?
First and second for next year, they would actually both be over. Um, the guideline goes up to 23 for first and second. The first grade ones would be 24, 24, 25. And the second grade ones would all be 26.
It's a lot of young kids in the classroom. I can only think what it's like when I have about 10 or 11 over for a birthday party in that age.
I have a question on the food service restructure. How many do we have in each building now?
We have five in the high school. And I guess it's five, down to five in the elementary now.
Okay. And so, we would cut one in either building. So one of the buildings would be down to four.
Question on, uh, um, eliminate or charge in town transportation. Is that $29,000 that consists of, is that fuel savings, drivers? Or is that part revenue from charging? How does that mix look?
Without a good way of doing it, because all of the buses come in from like a pie shape back to the, the middle, which would be the school here. Um, and is it four of them pick up in-town kids?
Andy said most, but lesser amount.
Oh, yeah, well, he did say most.
At least four routes come and pick up in-town kids. So we get charged a base rate for all the regular routes, so the morning after school routes. And this would reduce one route on that. Um, it'd be hard to put together a number of capacity vehicles to charge. Uh, given the number of families, uh, they might as well be charged. So the way to get a number on there was to take, reduce one route from the regular route bill.
And in-town, uh, like other school districts, range from anywhere from $300 to $600, um, per charge. Yep.
Is that per student or per family?
Per house.
Yeah, per house. So it's still 300 versus if you have two kids.
But what I said was like 250 per child, 500 family max.
Yeah, that's right. There is a family max on that. So I, I think that will be determined about. That's the next thing that we need to set, what the limits would be on that.
And this would be a two-mile area radius?
Uh, as the crow flies.
City limits or?
Well, it gets a little tricky up on the, I, we did this last year for this year, and way up in the west side, behind the fairgrounds, if you're driving that, it's over two miles.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Allison has a radius where that would be.
I just know that we're on the border of city limits to the east as well.
Right.
So I just was curious if some of them would be required.
Oh, outside of the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it gets two miles.
From the school.
Whether you're in-town or outside of town.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, that 29 or 30,000 number is eliminating. That's the savings that wouldn't, that doesn't have any charge figured in?
Yeah, a lot of these numbers are their estimates. So we'll either get an estimate for the transportation to remove one route.
Sure.
Today, physically, as do it as taking one route away would be difficult in that now all the rural routes are gonna have to consolidate or combine, chop children on the buses. And that could also change the route, which would impact the type.
Sure.
I think it's an unwritten kind of policy of the board where we try to keep kids on a bus less than an hour. And it would probably impact that.
Sure. And, and just for conversation sake, we've, in my time, we've talked about this a lot, of taking this away, you know, taking the transportation away. And the barrier has always been Highway 19 is just unsafe. And so, that one, I mean, all of these concern me, but that one is tough.
That's why I was wondering if it was within city limits or outside too.
Yeah, historically, my understanding is that the, the district has always had in-town transportation, which a lot of schools don't. And the safety factors is a big one that says I've always understood the historical perspective of the board.
The support teacher, um, is it, what is it specific? Is it, is it like a learning math deal or is it?
It's a math and reading, um, support for secondary students.
On the elementary school side, some more comment that'll lead into a question. I don't like, certainly any of us like seeing the hit at the elementary school. Um, that's a point of entry for most of our families. And first of all, we're going down to exceeding our guidelines and then having to market down to gym every other day. My concern is we're gonna lose even more families because of that. So outside of this, are there, have we looked at carrying over to more administrative restructure? Are, a lot of folks are put on double duty today. Are there areas that we can cover with having other admins covering either a gym class or a teacher?
We'd have to look at licensing from that standpoint.
Yep.
Um, and I know, uh, we got two social studies teachers here. We have, um, math and English, I believe. And we have FIED itself. Uh, we also have to look at the, uh, seniority part of it and whether we could bump anybody out of those positions. Um, because if we bump in somebody now, then, um, there's a seniority piece to it. And, and just, you know, you made a very important statement about we're afraid that we're gonna lose other students. I think we're at a point right now where no matter what we do or what angle we take, you always run that risk. And so, a lot of it is risk reduction.
Yep.
You know, for example, we could have put like middle school sports as a, as a broad statement down here that we're cutting that and turning that over to like community ed or to the club or CFYA. Um, but that cost expenditure was $70,000. But if we lose six or seven kids, then we're.
Running true.
So I think that's a, you know, it's, it's always a concern, but we get to that point where we're at right now when you start talking about full programming. We run the red scope losing kids anyway. Unfortunately.
Yep, agreed. I think there's, are there other areas where though we are sole sourced, right? So other districts have ADs that are doing assistant principal, ADs doing gym class, ADs doing teachers. Uh, we have others, food service that are, you know, helping on the paris side.
Multi-purpose.
Yes, so there's multipurpose roles. Are we sole sourced today? I know a lot of folks in this room are carrying a significant more other responsibilities, but outside of that, where are we ever taking a hard look and asking to where we can expand some of the responsibilities?
With the reduction that we had last year into administration, um, obviously, there's more put on, uh, the building principles.
Yes.
For that. So if we're asking them to teach classes, that means if they're not available during that time, you know, to deal with kids or parent issues or whatever else. And we can certainly take a look at it.
Yeah.
Um, but it's not ideal with, you know, it depends on what, what we're gonna do with staff.
Yep, agreed. Yeah, this is, you know, this is, it's such a huge hit at the elementary school. They've already taken one. I don't, I'd like to, I know these are proposals.
Yep.
But I'd like to see some areas outside of that, you know, from expanding to the whole responsibilities and getting, whether we need to map that all out and see where we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's worthwhile to, not only the students, but also the.
Sure.
I had a, just a general over our question here on, on this list. So this is meant for transparency, right? For the community so they know. What is, so we're making recommendations or taking recommendations from the finance committee? Is this, things change, right? So we go to vote, whatever, are we, are we tied to the, I mean, are we? So we're trying to be transparent, and we're trying to give the, the community a list, but this, things change. And what does that look like if, you know, say it doesn't pass? Are we tied, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I think I understand your question. Um, you know, you told the community you're gonna cut $700,000, and this is the list. And if you need, I understand that things may change as you go throughout the year before you get to the final list of it. Um, we think that this will work with the scheduling that we need to have done for the following year. If you are gonna change this list, I would ask, what are you going to change on it to still equal $700,000? Because I think that's the bare minimum that you have to reach. You can't just say you're gonna put this out there and all of a sudden you're only gonna cut $400,000. So I think you'd get torched.
Yeah. So, so to your point, it's the number that we gotta go after. How we get there is, for the sake of transparency, the why items are here, however, if that changes, right?
Well, I don't know. I think you kinda wanna look at this, that this is.
This is the last.
I think you wanna stay as close as you can.
I would say the only thing that would change dramatically is if, if, uh, class sizes change quite a bit, that that would be something that you consider.
Like we did with, uh, fourth grade.
Or, or what we do every single year is rightsizing classes.
Right.
So that would be one thing that I think you could look at possibly changing. But anything else here, we gotta go in with the mindset that this is what's happening.
Yeah. And, and one thing, and Rodney chime in if I miss it, but i- in the finance meeting, we discussed a lot about a four-day school week and what that looks like and what those potential savings are. And it's significant. Um, so it would relieve some pressure here we may feel, but it's really rushed too, right? So I think it's all new for everybody, um, if you choose to go that direction. Um, I think the number we thought was.
We're, we're thinking to play conservative at a $250,000 savings.
So.
Could potentially be more, but we don't have, there again, haven't had all the time, uh, to come up with the data. I know, uh, we've had conversations with other superintendents that are, uh, either currently doing it or, uh, about to implement it. And, uh, going off of, uh, what they've said and what, comparing our budgets to their budgets, we can use $250,000 as a pretty conservable, conservative achievable number.
In finance, spent a ton of time talking about it. And some admins are to chime in too. Uh, from that, so it's not on this as a recommendation just because that group felt it was, it was pretty rushed, pretty, to make that switch. Personally, I see a lot of pressure put on families here. Just, you know, like, it's not necessarily all taxpayers that are affected by this. It's mostly parents, right? Because it's teachers, it's activity fees, it's busing. And then you say we went to a, a four-day school week. Just adds a lot more, in my opinion, it's gonna add a lot more pressure on the parents, because on that Friday, whatever day it would be, you gotta find care for your child or, or stay home or try to work from home with you. And that's all difficult, so.
I would just add, it was a very quick decision. I mean, we were in that meeting for probably a little less than two hours. There was about eight of us, the majority of the meeting. Um, some community members, some staff. And, you know, feedback from, that's a very small group to make such a big change in our district. And, you know, we do have a little bit of information, but we don't have a ton. It'd be interesting to hear, um, from the public. We just don't have enough time to pull that. It'd be nice to research what has been done, you know, further with, um, other communities and stuff. We've started reaching out, but, um, haven't, haven't dove into it deeply. But it's a good opportunity for us to discuss it here first.
Yeah, I think when we very first started talking about a four-day, uh, school week, it was definitely, it's, it's still kind of a new concept. You know, and whether or not like educational-wise, does that actually pan out in the long run? Test scores, all that kind of fun information. Um, and like we talked about financially, like, are we still gonna have to have staff on? Are we still gonna have to have food services? Are we gonna be opening up the doors to be like, yep, well, we're taking all these kids, even though we're not teaching them, but we need to take care of them because the parents don't have a place for their kids for the day. Um, for sure, it's definitely a brand-new concept, but I think, I think it's an interesting idea. And, but like you said, yeah, it's, it is very new. It's a very new idea, I think, for a lot of people in the community.
I think a big new thing at the elementary school, I've heard a lot of things as, um, the elementary school's starting up now last week with their two days. Um, the new Read Act is, um, putting a lot of pressure on those elementary teachers. And fitting all of that curriculum into their day has been a challenge or, you know, something that's gonna be challenging to navigate, um, in addition to all the other subjects, trying to get those all in. And so, taxing a four-day week onto that right away as we're starting new curriculum too is daunting from the, strictly from the teacher perspective. Um, I don't know what that would look like. So it's just, it would be interesting to get more input from everyone that is affected.
Yeah, but this, this transportation one is, it's tough to chew on.
I was just gonna say on the four-day thing, it's also trying to figure out, uh, we're, we're, so when we're talking about, you know, whether it's test scores or what kind of education level they're getting from it, one thing that I don't know if there is any data on, but I try to think about is, uh, now we're looking at first and second graders. If there's 22 in a class for four days, are they getting better education that way or having 27 or 28 for five days?
Right, right.
And trying to figure that out, because I don't know.
Right, right, right.
It's been around long enough to do that. Right, that'll be, there's a few districts in the state of? Chatfield.
There's seven districts so far in Minnesota that are doing it. Uh, it's been.
It's been around for about 14 years.
In the state?
In the state.
Okay, so it should have.
There was a moratorium put on it, which was recently lifted. Um, and so, school boards can, uh, decide to go that route if they want to again.
It's becoming very popular in other states.
Yeah.
And the, the, besides the, the fiscal savings, there are social and emotional benefits that districts have found for both students and staff to go in four days a week. Uh, communities have to be, uh, surveyed every year as part of MBE's process. And it is between 85 and 90%, uh, people don't wanna get rid of it. It's a little, the first year is an adjustment. You know, people will change, they don't always go, you know, hand-in-hand. Um, but quite honestly, uh, the superintendent from ACGC, I asked him about childcare, because the childcare piece, we could offer it that fifth day for families. Yeah, can't.
So we can, we could still keep the facilities open for can kids.
Hundred percent.
We just, it wouldn't be the educational piece.
Right, and that's Fund Four versus Fund One.
Yep.
And so, you're running it out of a different fund, um, for that piece. So there's no additional cost in the general fund for that.
You'd be eliminating transportation on that day.
Correct.
Teachers wouldn't work.
Transportation.
The labor service is still there.
Obviously, you'll have some operational costs during.
Oh, yeah. They said the biggest operational cost that you're gonna save on is water. You're not gonna really save much on heating electricity.
Right.
Um, but water's gonna be probably your biggest savings, transportation, uh, some hourly employees, depending on how you structure. Uh, some schools offered lunches on that fifth day and some didn't. Um, and so, I mean, there's different ways of doing that.
We could look at doing that similar to what our summer programs, in a way.
Possibly.
Oh, yeah.
Because actually, so I've been digging on this since Thursday last week quite a bit. And, uh, there's definitely downsides of going to the four-day, but the, the biggest problem for me going, uh, that way, and this is something that people don't probably wanna talk about a whole lot, but it's a reality of it, is we maybe have some kids in this community that don't get the greatest care. Is we maybe have some kids in this community that don't get the greatest care at home. And.
They need school.
That's giving them one less day.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's what, uh, that's the one thing that, that's actually like the, really the only thing for me personally, uh, that makes that a hard decision. So.
I agree. Yeah. Food service and the care. Well, I'm with you on that one.
Yeah, I would agree. I would kind of, just as a blanket statement, reducing it would save us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, pullback, you know, we wouldn't have to cut those teachers, but then, yes, you're cutting a day of instruction. And I'd like to think that those kids would stay home and read and work on math problems and stuff, but we know that's probably not the case. They're gonna, you know, so is it better to have more kids in the class or is it better to have one less day? We don't have, we probably won't, wouldn't ever have data to run side by side on that, so it'd be.
Yeah, and I, boy, I, I would be much more excited to have that, you know, four day school week conversation as a, oh, let's look at this from a, let's, how can we make our staff more happy? How can we make the kids more happy versus, well, we're looking at it from a financial standpoint.
Yes.
Um, I don't want to feel forced financially, be like, well, we're gonna lose a day of school.
Yeah.
Um, I would much rather wanna look at it from a different perspective, cause that, the vast majority of schools that went this route, that's why they went that route. Um, for, uh, the social, emotional aspect and everything like that. Um, but.
The vast majority of them went because.
Did they make it more financial?
They went with financial.
And they, and they saw the, they saw the, uh, social, emotional piece.
Those, those scores, like, didn't they, those kinda scores skyrocketed, didn't they? That aspect of it, the social, emotional, like.
That's where we're, that was the, that was the unseen benefit. So.
So, we take it as an action to, I mean, it's not on this list, are we gonna take it as an action or what do we wanna do for moving it? Are we gonna have another review with it, try to get some more data? And I think it's an interesting concept, but it's not on this list, which I think is if, if we're gonna socialize something to the community. Uh, you know, do we, we feel we wanna put it on here or are we feeling we need to get some information on it?
So, here's, if you guys need some structure, I guess, to this conversation. You can do whatever you want to with this list. It came as a recommendation from finance, so I think there's some weight behind that. Uh, you could add four day week to this, take off two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of cuts on here. We would have roughly a year to prepare for that. We can prepare starting today and depending on how the election goes. We can either continue to prepare or, or, um, stop preparing. Or, you know, maybe this is something you wanna keep continuing to prepare so that we have all the information no matter what. Or could leave the list as is and add it to, cause if it fails, nope, we're doing this now. And it's not gonna be a choice because of the, the financial pieces of it. So, there's different options, I think, on this. But if you do add it as a piece of, yep, we're, we're passing this list as is, but for FY twenty-eight. If it fails, that'll be on the list and it is gonna happen.
Yeah. So, there's other thing, like, I wanna discuss here. Um, Reed, question for you. Uh, I know when we increased our activity fees up to a hundred and eighty-five dollars last year, did that put us like the top of the conference pretty much? Or close to?
Top.
That was the very top?
Lured is the only one that's.
On private school.
It's with hockey and.
Yeah.
So, we're now, just, now we're looking at just going to make it even better. Okay? The other one is on, um, increasing the rentals at the community center. Is, is that, that's basically just doubling everyone's rent there?
I don't know if that's.
Yes.
Double.
Double everyone's.
Did I have a long-term contract?
Three.
I'd like to make a statement on that, just based on the discussion at the finance committee too, um, that eighteen thousand is increasing. Um, that includes a thousand dollars a month added to the senior center rental, which we just, if you remember the last cuts, we just added that a thousand dollars. And that took some discussion and took some time for them to.
Be willing.
Accept that. And adding another, they could potentially say, no, thank you, we're gonna find a different facility or whatever. And then we would not only not be saving the eighteen, we would be losing that revenue that we gained from the previous year cuts.
Right. Well, that's cool. What I was gonna kinda get at is, I actually don't, I, we can probably say all we want on that, the rental space that they give is probably worth that. Now, if realistically we're gonna get it, I don't think so. But then I also look at the, I look at more of the, um, uh, the two dance entities that we have there. If we are doubling theirs, we were, those are the ones where with the limited amount of space that they take up. I, I think they a hundred percent go somewhere else. So, I look at this as a negative thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
I look at that one as a negative thirty-six. I also look at the in-town transportation. This is where we can talk about those different things. If you, if you lose three kids, that changes from a thirty-six thousand dollars going against our cuts to sixty thousand plus dollars. And you add both those two things up, now we're close to a hundred thousand. Now, we're at six hundred thousand. I know you can make that argument for multiple different things here. I, I'm just looking at what is, you know, realistic. And, uh, the one thing that we haven't even touched on at all is the, which I think is absolutely huge, but the community will never see this. Is the energy piece. Taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars away from the facilities.
Yeah.
We just did that bond, uh, that reduced our LTFM dollars to, Josh, are we looking at three hundred thousand dollars roughly? Per year till twenty thirty-two?
Yeah, correct.
Three hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain all of our buildings and we're taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars away from that? That's, that's ludicrous.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I mean, we're just setting ourselves up for failures for not, not just needing, uh, a levy to pass. We, we need another bond.
You know, one thing in facilities that was, that was talked about was, or there was, there's two teachers in, that were at that meeting. And the question was asked, how do you, how do you make a four day week, or four day week work? And, and both of them said, we have no idea. How, we're barely doing it now. And we're gonna have thirty more minutes to get, get everything done. And, uh, the good news is admin and teachers are as resilient as anybody. They always, we, we get handed things all the time and they figure out a way to make it work. But the difference is, is it working for the students, right? So, we'll make it work for a schedule, but is it working for the students? And probably for their future. Um, I don't think anybody knows that, so. But the benefit is you, you see if the teachers, potentially.
Well, yeah, potentially and how you wanna.
Yeah.
How, how you wanna restructure it, um.
I think like you guys talked about, this is, this, the reason, the rationale, um, behind the list is to be very, very transparent, um, in the potential. Um, this, like you guys have pointed out a few times here now, it, this list is a list that makes our school look unfavorable. When we start doing things like this, this makes our school look unfavorable. This makes us look like a school, um, that you would not want to put your kids in. That you would not move your family to, to be one hundred percent realistic. Who wants to have to deal with getting their kid to and from school all the time when they literally live in town, right? Like, dealing with transportation or not even getting FIED every single day at a bare minimum. Potentially having facility issues that we can't afford to fix and our building looks awful because we can't afford to fix it. Like, it just, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a list that just doesn't, just doesn't make us look good. And, but that's, but that's the reality, I think, that we're living in right now financially.
Mr. Strauss, is this, uh, is there any way that I kinda pick your brain on, have you put any thought in that four day week? On how do you think that, you think that would go? Pros, cons?
In terms of curriculum, which has been brought up, I think that depending on what teacher and what grade you talk to, they would say it would help in some ways, maybe hurt in other ways. Um, for example, I mean, we still would potentially have to figure this out, but if you add an hour to a day, that's different than adding thirty minutes to a day. Or if you add forty-five minutes, that's different. Cause one thing that's getting hit right now because of the Read Act, uh, is we've been reducing social studies and science. Which I know Jeff and I hate to hear being social studies teachers, and I know Heather hates to hear that behind me. She's probably daggering at me right now. But, uh, that's one thing, just because, you know, social studies doesn't get tested and science is kinda the third one of the reading, math and science that does get tested. Um, with us implementing new curriculum with Amplify, uh, K-one and two are supposed to try to get in a hundred and twenty minutes a day of reading instruction, two sixty-minute chunks. I can tell you right now, we're not doing that. But I can also tell you, talking to principals and instructional coaches and teachers from other schools that have been doing this for a few years. They're not either, but they're still covering everything. So, a year from now, we will know a lot more on how much time we have. We are all hoping and every, like I said, the feedback that I've gotten is that if, if we kept our schedule the way it is right now, we would be able to build in more time for social study and science. Um, if you added forty minutes to a day, you'd be able to get in that much more. Um, and it kinda depends on what grade level you're looking at, cause like I said, K through two has the two, two different components. You're supposed to teach for a hundred and twenty minutes total. Third grade has a hundred and twenty minutes just total, not two different components, just total. Four and five have ninety minutes total for reading instruction. Um, that, you know, the K through two, there's one of those components that ends a few weeks earlier. So, like in first grade, I know, for example, they'll be able to get one of those components in, they'll be done by like mid-May. The other one, as of now, they'll be a week short, but they're hoping with having those couple of weeks at the end, that they'll still be able to get it all in. So, uh, they're essentially diving into curriculum starting this week. So, I mean, even in a month, we're gonna know a lot more as far as the timing of things and how quickly they can get through things. If everything that says it takes fifteen minutes really only takes eleven, well, that's a lot of time that you get back, you know? But we just don't know that right now, cause we literally, this is our first day essentially, some of those teachers will be starting this new curriculum. Um, so it could potentially add some of those things, like social study and science back in. Um, Jeff, you made it sound like the people that you reached out to said the tap, test scores kinda remain flat. Didn't see a big increase or decrease.
Yeah, there wasn't, I, I don't even know if there's enough data per se on it, but from what the superintendent that I talked to, the test scores wouldn't change either way. So, I, they said flat.
Yep.
Would be a good term.
Yep. Um, so, it's just one of those things where I, I think right now I could survey my staff and I, that I would get, based on just the anecdotal conversations I've had with staff, I'd probably get more than half that would be willing to be in favor of it and try it. Um, but that all, there's still, I think, a fair amount that wouldn't, but like, or Luke, you mentioned everybody's resilient. I don't know if that's good or bad, but they'll do it. We got a great, great staff in both buildings. I mean, that would make it work and would do as best they can. I know I just talked for a while and gave you no answer, but.
Well, could, can you, and there again, this is just, this is just gonna be an opinion, but when we talk about these first or second graders, do you think they, does, does a child get better at education if there's twenty-two in a class and for four days with a little bit longer time compared to twenty-seven in five days?
The younger you go, the easier it is, or the, the bigger the difference is. Um, I know my fifth grade teachers don't want thirty kids in a class, but it's much easier for them to handle thirty than it is for a first grade teacher to handle twenty-five. Um, and that's where we're teaching a lot of our basic foundational things, just like the sounds, the phonemes, things like that and reading. Um, so, yes, in kindergarten, first and second grade, yes, I would say going from nineteen or twenty students, which is what first grade would roughly be at. Um, to, assuming it would be eighteen, nineteen compared to twenty-four, twenty-five, um, that's a big difference.
So, you, you, you think having less kids for four days would be more beneficial to them than a bigger class for five?
I think potentially. I, I think twenty-five first graders is a lot. It's a lot. Twenty-six second graders is a lot. Um, twenty-five first graders is, really is even more, you know, you're talking to one year younger. Um, I, I think it has the potential to. I think it's one of those things where figuring it out. It's just like anything, the, the first year, months, whatever that we do, we would have to figure out, how does it all fit in? Where do we get this time back? How much more progress can we make? You know, fifth grade, for example, they've already talked about, if they need to cut out one unit of theirs for Amplify. Which, we've all talked about, which unit are we gonna cut out? We're trying to look at standards and things like that. So, um, it, it has a potential to, um, but it all depends. And we would have to commit to it. We would have to make sure, hey, as teachers, we're not just using this extra time. It's not just extra time that we have and that we get a day off. You know, they're gonna need to work.
And how about, um, keeping those kiddos focused? You know, adding another half hour in the day or forty-five minutes in the day? You know, when you're talking a hundred and twenty minutes of reading and stuff, and you know, is it hard to keep them focused to get it all in?
Um, I don't think, if we went, if it was forty-five minutes, let's say, I, is it more difficult? Yes. I mean, keeping all of us focused for forty-five extra minutes a day would be difficult too. Uh, but I think, you know, when you think about how some of our grade levels have, to try to get some of these things in, have cut down their snack time. They're combining like read aloud and snack time and they're getting pulled from something all at the same time. Um, that's, I don't know. You can kinda go back and forth, I guess, on which way to do that.
Well, there's different options that we have here to do. Uh, we can go, uh, with a recommendation of the finance, pardon, uh, committee. We can make changes, uh, or we can table this for a few days. Uh, we have options. So, everyone's aware of that.
Yep. You don't need to, to your point, when you talk about options, I think, uh, Mr. Clinton made a point in finance committee that we've got a thousand dollar line item on here, right? So, there's, there could potentially be other areas where, you know, if we're looking at a thousand dollars, where it comes from, where we get, you know, I, in finance, I mentioned, you know, what would a staggered start time look like? Would, you know, if you, if the elementary starts at, or if the high school, middle school, high school starts at nine, elementary's at eight. And you have potentially less buses, you know, so that they come in, drop off middle school, high school, go back out, go get elementary kids, bring them back. How does that look like when you got mixed families, you know, like, where do they go? What does that look like? I think Josh mentioned, if you don't sell, or if you sell a bus, you're not getting a ton in return for that, maybe. But could you push off a bus and then we're out of our rotation? You know, it just didn't seem like it was gonna be a huge cost savings, but if it's, looks to me like a thousand dollars or more, it should be considered, right? So, um.
Yeah, are there other, so to that point, are there other assets that we have, unused equipment, other things? I'm sure this has been looked at from the previous cuts, uh, we have. Or, or one, that's one question, are there unused assets that we have that we might think we use, but in reality, it's something that's nice to have? Could we offload? Could we sell those, right? Is there something, to your point, Luke, is if we're looking at a thousand bucks, what is, what do equipment assets get us? And then two, from the CCC, right, we're generating revenue of that, is that, can we move that here to the school? If we were to sell that building, generate revenue off that, move all those activities to our district, or these buildings? I know we own that building, we pay to maintain it. What does selling that look like? Selling it to city, the community wants a, a general community center. And I don't know if we need to be that community center. Not saying that we are, but we sell that and we move everything into our building.
As far as, um, assets, the buses, some of the buses that we have now, you're not gonna get very much. And what we mean by very much, if we would sell them, if we sold our oldest ones that are about ready to go out, the, maybe a thousand or two.
A thousand on trade-in, on, by the buses.
Right. Just so that you guys have that information. And then as far as selling the CCC, uh, that can go one of three ways, I guess. Uh, one, you can sit on it for a while and you still have to heat it, uh, run air through it, because if not. because if not, then you have a mold issue. Two, you can sell it privately, meaning that you can put it out on the open market, and if there's a company that wants to buy it, you might get a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars out of it. Or if you don't want to deal with the capital cost, with all that capital cost avoidance, you could turn it over to the city for a dollar, if they're willing to take that on. You know, the city isn't going to buy it for two hundred thousand dollars. I just don't see that happening. But a private firm might buy it for a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. I have no idea. But that is one-time cost recovery. And so that's just a one-year of filling it in, it's not an ongoing. So if you, let's say you sell it for two hundred thousand dollars, you're not going to keep that two hundred thousand dollars year over year.
Understood that, but then we have the operational cost that we have, our facilities, our basketball, we have to maintain it. We have to, we pay for the, what you're describing, the heat and the cooling. Does that, I don't know what that number is.
Oh, so.
You know, is that number five thousand, is it a thousand?
So, the reason why I don't have the sale of CC, sorry, the closed down, just the operational cost, not talking about maintenance or attrition, it's real second, so operation is about thirty thousand dollars a year is what we look at. You combine that with the rent to receive, closing the CCC, and that's about ten, twelve thousand dollars to close it. But we're still on the hook for maintaining that building. To your point, when you say unused assets, really that would be the only thing. If, so I would say that's a natural occurrence, I don't want to be the CCC. I don't know what kind of price you would give if you sold it, and I know that you'd lose a lot of flexibility the district has in terms of space, issue spatial needs. We've gone and thought of it before, we didn't have field offices in the past, we got practices done, but it would be something that you're, would be a definite change in the district community, for sure.
Yeah, and does that offset having, you know, the loss of a teacher or fire a teacher? Right, that's what I'm trying to get at.
And that's just, that point to it, you really want to look at it, because as Jeff says, that's a one-year item. But does CC be gone forever? You're not going to get it back. It would have been another bond for twenty-plus million to make the building, so.
And that's where, if you kind of go, if you look at it kind of business-wise, which unfortunately, that's what we have to look at. If, say we could sell it for two hundred thousand dollars, and with what the space and what that building offers, if we ever wanted to try to get that space back somewhere else here, what would that cost us?
I mean, to build something like that.
Millions of dollars, and so that's why when you look at a potential of just a savings of ten thousand dollars a year, it's a tough one.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a much easier conversation for me if it's not being used, but it's used a lot, especially in wear time, you know, so. I do think, you know, I've been saying it for a long time now, I do think we need to use our facilities more. We need to find creative ways to, you know, if it's open gym and pass the hat and literally, you know, make a donation, or whatever, whatever it looks like, or it's rented out, you know, it's the only other wood floor we have in the district, right, for basketball purposes. And it's, it's not that old, right, it was redone not that long ago. It's nice, it should be used, we need to find ways to bring in revenue with it.
Well, one more thing before the four-day week. Superintendents that I talked to that have implemented it said that, yes, you may lose some students also, but you also may gain students out of it. And it's probably more a gain than anything, because if it's some families better to be in a fourth-period day, obviously, we can't make that assumption here, because we're a different district. They also said that they use it as a recruitment tool for staff as well.
I'll just say, like, where my head is at with this, just so, and maybe it'll lead to further, better discussion. I really like the idea of the four-day school week. I think it is, when we're in this situation, when we're up against the wall, I like the idea of it. I think we should explore it starting today. I just don't know if I'm comfortable doing it, turning and burning this quickly and putting that on our admin and teachers and parents.
Yeah, the families are.
This is going to be, you know, all this is hard to swallow for everybody in the community, but that one is a, is a big one, and.
I get that, but at the same time, we are giving them a year. So that's where I don't know if any other districts that's been implementing, I mean, I don't know. That's what, I get what you're saying, but like, are we giving two years then?
Yeah.
Like, you know, a year and a half, like, what is?
I think, so we are giving them a year, but we're giving them a year starting today with no information as far as how we execute it.
Right.
You know, if it was a laid-out plan, here's what it is, and here's how it works, I'd feel a lot better about that, because we're going to get questions probably after this meeting of what's going on, and I can't give them an answer, like, and no one can. And I think that, that's the hard part for me. I really think it's, if that's the savings, and you feel good about that number, it's the next thing. It's coming, right?
Especially if we're not, if this does not pass, this is going to be the correct comment.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, because, and we did talk about it's finance, if it doesn't, if the levy doesn't pass, we're looking at the same number again.
Year after year, after year.
Year after year.
Yep.
And so it's here, whether we want it or not, and if that's the, so.
The only thing that I would, the only thing that I would say the difference is, is, and maybe Josh, correct me if I'm wrong with my numbers-wise, is if you go to that four-day now for twenty-seven, our class sizes will guarantee to lower, okay, right away with what the savings is. If you wait another additional year, and we have to come with another seven hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts the following year, now we're dropping down to a four-day, but yet we're keeping the class sizes higher, potentially?
Potentially.
So now you're reducing that day, but now the class sizes are higher again, too.
What was he saying?
Yeah, you could have twenty-six in a classroom and a four-day week.
Yeah, and because that's, that's the thing about where we're just, the sooner you possibly implement something to save money, the more it affects everything down the road compared to maxing out every single year. I mean, that's what we've been doing the last few years, is we're, we're using as much money as we possibly can every single year, whereas, you know, if we would have made some of these drastic cuts like three years ago, we have more money to work with now, or less cuts. But of course, we're always trying to provide the best experiences, the best education possible to everyone. And so that's why you continue to always max it out. So that's why the next step is just, if we don't, if we don't try to save some more right now, now we're, now we're forced to do it the next time, but we're, our educational experience is just even that much more worse. And that's what makes it a real struggle, and that's what, yeah, I get, this is a real eye-opener, this is a shocker. And everyone's got to remember, whatever decision we make is going to be the wrong one to a lot of people. You got, so that's why you got to, you got to get that out of your head. You're going to make the wrong decision.
And I would concur with that statement. No matter what we do, there is an inherent risk that people will leave the district.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's, we're at that point right now, unfortunately, where we're going to be getting into programming very soon, and it's probably after this, because I, the cutting more staff just can't happen. It just really can't.
Yeah, and that's, Jeff, to my point earlier, that's exactly what I'm getting at, is the concern, this, the top three line items.
I'm sick of cutting teachers.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I agree with you, and maybe I wasn't at the finance meeting. Was it discussed, is there, there's two admin roles on here, consolio and secretary, right? And so are there other buckets that we could be missing, right? That, we have a thousand-dollar line item on here. From the roles and responsibilities, are there areas that, from an admin level, we should be taking another hard look at? From a, from a broader stroke of the requirements of what, one exact, one job is this? Okay, well, can they do other, understand there's licensing piece of it. But this is, the top three really does not sit well with anyone in this room. And I don't, there's no, there's one admin restructure on here?
I think that, so, to your question, it wasn't discussed at finance as far as adding roles to admin, and so it wasn't, I just don't know how you get to sixty thousand dollars doing that, you know, like, how you, how you take on a role, and how that number, because it's got to equal that.
Yeah, I agree, but if we haven't looked at it, how do we not, how do we not know?
The only one thing I will just answer to that is, and this was before you were here, I would say if you go back twenty years, which is a long ways, and things were a little bit different, but we already have a lot of combined roles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Happy homecoming week, a great week, everyone.
There, we got that in twice today, so I think, I think we're covered. Just getting back to you, that's where, I'm just saying, we already have a lot of people in dual roles, in some case, triple roles.
Yeah, it's not four.
And now that's comparing to how things were back then.
Yeah.
That's why I just wanted to make, make it clear, that a lot of things have been mined.
We could certainly add more roles to admin, but something has to give from a standpoint. It could be supervision, it could be doing with kids, and it could be a multitude of roles.
Yep, I, I think we all are saying, you know, it's worthwhile to look at.
Absolutely.
But we don't have the answer, we didn't do it at the finance committee, and that's not, you guys had a lot going on, but I would prefer to go and say, hey, we did exhaust it. Here's everything we mapped out. We have these three people covering food service, transportation, X, Y, and Z. So we have some better information versus, yeah, we know everyone's doing it, but we don't have it documented, and what if there's another fifty grand in there that we can uncover? Right, I don't know, we don't, I don't think we have.
Talking around, pretty soon, we're all going to be alternating one hour.
Yeah, seriously, I mean, that's, yeah, probably going to be there. But I, again, where I think someone brought up, like, where do we go from here is, I think there has to be another further discussion around the admin restructuring roles and responsibilities. If we're scratching at a thousand dollars, there's going to be money there that we have to uncover somewhere at that level. But to your point, we got to get the ball rolling on something here. We're coming up to a wire.
You know, one thing that was also brought up in the finance committee was, surrounding the four-day week was, do we want, do we want that discussion going into levy goal, right? Do we want people voting based on that, right? So if you want a four-day work week or four-day school week, you vote no to the levy, because that's potentially what we're going to do here. Now, I would say we're looking at that anyway, like, it's going to be down the road here, but if someone goes in that booth and is, you know.
Admittedly against it.
Or wants it, then they vote no to the levy.
They vote no to the levy.
And that becomes the bigger issue now. Does that happen? I don't know.
It can be seen as muddying the water, I think.
I agree with that.
It's a big change, these are big changes, don't get me wrong. I don't like seeing teachers ever on this, on this list. But I would also argue the fact that, yes, it muddies the water. How do we know that if we approve a four-day week? Our levy didn't pass, if we approve a four-day week, that's likely because our levy didn't pass. Then we're looking at fiscal year twenty-eight doing more cuts, because we said this is like an annual thing, if that levy doesn't pass, because inflation. Then are we looking at cutting teachers? You know, so it's, which way do you want to look at it? It's a sticky thing, it's a sticky slope, and, you know.
I still think the four-day week should be looked at, just for potential savings, and if it benefits the kids down the long run. It might not, but it could, because we don't have enough data, not knowing, you know, with seven districts in our state that have it, how are they faring? You know, it's so new that we don't have it.
Some of them, two thousand and eleven.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, this will be the graduating class this year.
Yeah, that's what, they already have their first full replication through.
Yep. We don't have feedback or anything, Anna?
No, we do, they, they.
They have the survey, and eighty-five to ninety percent of their staff and community say, don't take it away from us. We love it.
And their, their scores have remained flat.
I guess what I was pointing at, that, that regardless of the levy passes or doesn't pass, it still can be on the table.
We can still continue to look at it.
Yeah.
I would hope that conversation starts, maybe this meeting, right?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Whatever it takes to, if we, well, obviously, if we put it on here, if we don't, I think it should still be. And that's how the finance committee felt, right, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the recommendation of the finance committee, I guess, but I think that that four-day week discussion needs to still happen. I think that needs to be something that we all dive into, all look into, whether it's test scores or how it's affected those other schools in the district, or polling the community and just getting out there and asking, you know, what are your thoughts on this, and, you know, at the recent, this is, this is the discussion at the recent board meeting, how do you feel about this? I guess I was surprised just with the couple of teachers that we've now heard from, as this is starting to come out, that disagreed with it. And so that was eye-opening for me. I thought, at first, I was like, wow, that's, this is a great idea, yes, for social, emotional. Our teachers are, you know, they're overworked. Yes, you know, some argue that they have summers off, but they also work excessive hours in the school year. And so giving them one day without instruction would be beneficial, but then hearing that they feel like they would be overworked, you know, maybe it would be something that would be more taxing on teachers, you know? It just, again, we just don't have enough information, so I think, yeah, this is what was recommended from the finance committee, and so, but I think that we start researching the four-day week starting today as another option for our school.
I agree.
I just wanted to put out there just a couple of numbers there. Again, this is just what I came up with, just to show what I potentially, if we decided to go the four-day week, what it could look at saving on this sheet. And what I looked at doing was, I don't think we could save all three positions, but you could save two of the teaching positions, so. And then also, so there is a little over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I also look at the, the transportation piece here of the increase of thirty thousand dollars. I look at wiping that out is what we talked about before, the potential of losing just one or two kids because of that, and, or you don't get the people to pay. So that's where I just think that, you know, that's not going to be, that, I mean, there's a lot of different numbers in here that are a shot in the dark. I feel like that's a huge shot in the dark. So that's where I would look at taking that away, and then I would look at the increasing the rentals at the community center, just because I, what we talked about earlier, I look at that as a thirty-six thousand dollar reduction. I think of the chances of getting all parties to agree to pay double are slim to none.
Yeah.
And so that's where I would look at removing that, and then, there again, talking about the facilities piece earlier, I would look at cutting that energy piece in half down to seventy-five thousand. And when, when you add all that up, that's two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and if we wanted to estimate on roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars savings, that's kind of where, that's, that's what I come up with.
So really, you're saying this is a list plus a four-day week of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it gets us to seven oh two?
Roughly in that.
Potentially.
That's just what, that's the way I look at it. I would, I would, or you, everyone here is equal say, right? So everyone can look at everything differently. Luke and I are both on facilities, so I think we, you know, we understand how restrained we are for till 2032, which, there again, you look at that from a teacher's standpoint too, like, we, we need money in first grade, second grade, but we look at, we're reducing five percent of their supply budget, that their budget's been reduced how many times that they don't even have a damn budget.
I know.
And so, like, you're taking five percent away of nothing. And so that's where you can, you can look at those numbers all different ways. I just look at, we have three hundred thousand dollars to work with, well, TFM dollars till 2032 on our, on our facilities that we have here. That is a drop in the bucket, and like, even taking seventy-five thousand dollars away from that is stupid.
Our, our live streaming stuff, and here obviously talks about, you know, charging for it, how much? Our, our live streaming stuff, and here obviously talks about, you know, charging for it, how much, how much does it cost for us to just have it at all?
Well, that's all part of a whole huddled package.
I know, I know, a huddled package, how much does that cost?
Seventeen five.
Seventeen five?
Seventeen five, and some of that come out of the coaches' funds too, or no, that's something that the school takes care of, the whole thing.
Court work facility.
I mean.
It's our last year of the contract, so we could look at asking coaches what programs are fully used.
It's not before a job.
No.
They got pet last year. For this year, it's coming out of fundraise dollars.
Okay, just a question, just going back to.
Can I, I'm sorry, even if we don't, if we stop live streaming, we will still have the equipment, because coaches will still be using it.
Okay.
So there's that.
Yeah.
Just going back to Clinton's point here, because I agree with him, some of this stuff is certainly not gonna come to fruition here as far as the numbers go. So if we add in the four day work week, and now we're at nine plus, or nine and a half, 950. Because I don't, like, how do we, how do we put that on the list, we told them, you know, do we totally take out E energy, no, do we leave at 150, do we take out a chunk of that, and just mix and match with the 250, or can we?
The, the board can do whatever it wants today, you know, the, the finance committee brought this as a recommendation, the board can tweak the recommendation to what the finance committee brought, so if you put in the $250,000, to keep it around that $700,000 number that you guys put in there, you can take away $250,000 off the list. So if you wanted to have the E energy, so at 75 out of the 250, the CCC is 18, the busing is 29, and, you know, add your way up to 250, and then remove those items off that list, if that makes sense.
If we approve this, are we bound by this recommendations?
I think it would be, I mean, you guys can do whatever you want.
We can.
I'm just saying, if we, when the school year goes on, and we find that there's more kids that come in, so that affects.
Yeah, we had a conversation earlier, I mean, I think it's rational to do like we did, because we made cuts last year, and we added back in a teacher because fourth grade got really bad, right?
Yeah, I just, if we, if we approve their recommendations, are we bound by this?
I, I think you always have to be flexible from a standpoint, but if you have no really good justification, I don't think you add any of it back.
You know, to that point, it's, okay, we got three teachers on here, and we add one back in, that's not a negative. If we're gonna take, if we go and say we're gonna prove this, oh, by the way.
We're taking another one.
We're taking another one, that's, that's a win, yeah. I, I would say if, I think what you're gonna add to is, Joey, is, this isn't hard line law, right? This is saying, these are the potential to get to 700, we go to the 250, do we even know that, my exerted, is that 250, I think that's a good estimate, but should we process and say, well, maybe it's 300,000, or maybe it's actually only 150, right? I, I don't know, do we have those?
I think using that 250 number, we're, we're going off of data off of the very, very low side.
Okay.
So that's why we're using that as a conservative number that we know that we can reach.
Yep.
There could potentially be more, we don't know until we get into it, so you never, you never wanna plan.
No, I know, 250 is confident, I got, I guess I got the guess that it was kind of a shot in the dark of.
No, 250 is a confident, is a confident number.
It's a, it's a national, national percentage from the data that national schools use and Minnesota schools. Every school I've talked to in Minnesota that uses it, 2 to 3% of your expenditure budget is what they've been seeing.
Okay, all right, that's fair, for some, I guess I got the impression it was a rough estimate.
That number is a shot.
All right.
That's where we just, we just wanted to use a number that's for surely would be achievable.
Yeah, it'd be conservative.
I think, Jody, I think you're correct in saying that if, if we approve this, then for the public and for transparency, we'd say, yes, this is potentially what's going to happen.
Well, and then I see that the finance committee put a lot of time and effort into this, and so I don't want.
Well, I'm 100%, that's, that's where I have a, I have an extremely tough time with that, I wanna, their, their recommendation is, is, is definitely taken, well, and warranted. So I, that's where.
Yeah.
No matter what, these are very tough decisions to make, and like I stated before, you're not gonna make a decision that appeals or appeases everyone.
I, I think it should be on this list in some fashion, for a week savings, and I don't know what it looks like, I don't know if that is just a thing that says.
A little asterisk?
Yeah, or, because Clinton's right, the E energy thing for facilities is crazy. I'm really concerned about the 30,000 in, in town transportation, obviously the teachers.
So my question is, can we star those items? This list is this list, at, at the bottom, we put four day week, and then we say, four day week upon research, with removing these, those items that Clinton discussed, and then that leaves us an opportunity to research, but it's a very likely that that is a line item instead of these things that we think are not.
So essentially approving that $950,000 worth of cuts or something right away?
Well, not necessarily.
Replacement.
I would say a replacement, so it's one or the other, upon research of a four day week.
These potentially could be wiped out.
These items would be removed, is that?
Because I'll be the one that's gonna have to put this together. I give, and I understand the need to put a list out and have transparency on what it is, but we know we're gonna reduce $700,000. We may not know exactly, especially, you know, finance committee Friday and today, with discussion, how to get there. Do you say we need to reduce $700,000, and we'll be looking at increased class sizes, increased fees, potentially a four day school week?
Yeah.
To get to that $700,000?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't give maybe the itemized list that you're looking through?
Right, right.
But it gives you some time here to discuss how things get to that?
I like that idea, um, I don't, I'm just one person, but, just, then it doesn't hold us to this list, and it doesn't hold us to the four day week, because again, I mean, we've seen a one hour discussion, it's hard to make that decision on, you know.
How would you like that to make, because I, I will be the one saying in front.
I think, I think, so the point of doing this early and before was that we hadn't done in the past, and we haven't had a detailed list, so we decided as a board that we, we felt we needed this, and now it's become complicated with some unknowns here, but that's what we voted to do already, is to have a detailed list, now if that's too muddy, then I, I understand that too, but.
Well, if someone asks, how are you gonna get to 700,000, we can point to this. We're not saying these are the hard line, this is absolutely gonna happen tomorrow, right? This is how we get there.
Could you say, this list is for sure, and it's either going to be, so this list here is, quick cast of math, $450,000, and then the other 250 is either gonna be the four day week, or it's gonna be
These items.
These four items here, or whatever it's.
Teachers, you know, essentially.
Depending on further information.
Yeah.
Depending on further information.
Yeah.
It might get muddied.
Yeah.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
I think people will take the vote as, what am I voting for, am I voting for a week, or am I voting for a referendum?
Well, and that's what, that's what would be my concern, I don't want people going into that vote thinking, well, if I vote no, then I get a four day week, correct?
That, I'm starting to like that idea, just because that takes away the, that takes away the vote from the person that you're scared about that's gonna vote no, just because
Yeah.
of the four day week, when that's not a guarantee, that they're for that.
Right, right.
So that takes that away possibly.
I know we want a, a structured list, but maybe we can't give that right now.
So in a, in a simpler way, couldn't we just do, add the 250 in here, 950, and from this 950, we gotta get 700?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's included in this.
All of these things are on.
All these things are there, and we gotta decide based on what we figure out through this, between now and soon, with that 500 or 480 school, and so 950 is the number, through that list, we get 700. And then it's just, to me, that's much more clear than asterisks and pie charts and.
This is the list that is for sure, and this is the maybe, and this is the possibly, and.
Yeah, and it's just, the board will decide from this list, 700,000, right, and here's 950, and.
And we will decide this in January, February, January?
Yeah.
Yeah?
As a vote?
Yeah.
Does that seem something reasonable?
Yeah, we can figure it out.
Because really, we're just, well, just, really, we're adding one, we're just adding one line item, it's just that, that line item happens to be a large dollar amount.
Yeah.
And a, and a big shift for.
And a big change in the, yeah.
Huge lifestyle change.
Yeah. On a sheet of paper, it's the line item, the dollars are there, and then behind it is the weight of.
So in a sense, you're gonna pass this list plus the 250 for the four day week, and say, these are the items that we are going to choose from down to 700,000?
Yeah.
Because, and, and again, when, last time we went through this, we approved 500,000, and that quickly jumped to 800,000, we cut.
Correct, correct.
And so we may be, and that was based on what St. Paul passed us, and hopefully nothing like that happens, but we just don't know either, so.
I think it would really, I think, it was said a couple times, but I think it would really benefit us to get our ducks in a row, and get quite a bit more information on the four day school week, because like you said, I think we're gonna run into a lot of questions, and I think there's gonna be a lot of confusion when people, when the day comes and they have to vote yes or no, I think this four day school week, I think that's going to sway some votes. Yep. And I, I think there's a chance that it could sway more votes than what we think, and so I think we really need to have a lot of information that gets out, and gets people aware on how we think and how we feel this potentially could function for us.
A lot of people vote absentee. That being in September 19?
Yeah.
Tim, I know you had to jump out, and you, you know, we're obviously down at the bone here, but do you have any input on a four day week, or anything on here, or a four day?
So I kinda, as a teacher, when I was in Farmington, I kinda dealt with something like a four day week, it wasn't exactly that, but it was, we extended the day instead of adding days to the end of the contract year when we were over snow days. We ended up adding like five minutes per class period, you know, actually, it wasn't even that, it was five minutes to the day for 30 days to make up the minutes for the day that we were over, whatever, so. I, you know, I can't speak with any certainty with how this would impact achievement or anything like that, because honestly, I think teachers do a really good job of adjusting as they go, so, you know, when we went to, during COVID, we were doing a block schedule, I know the teachers didn't get to some curriculum that they had before, but my guess is, had we continued doing that schedule, they would have adjusted, been able to adjust, the first year is always gonna be the hard one. You know, for me, it, it was important, we actually increased our general supplies and instructional supply budgets last year by 10%. And that was an important addition to the budget for me, because we had not increased that since I've been here, so it'd been 15 years I've done anything, and as you guys all know, 15 years of inflation, you know, eats at that, so to me, that, that cut is a tough one, because that impacts every teacher and what they can do, and even with the 10% increase, we're finding that we're still kinda short in some of the areas, so. If, if we were to choose that small little piece, I'm gonna actually look at that, not as across the board cut, but I'm gonna be more targeted to some specific areas, because like, science spends a lot of money, but there are things that cost a lot of money, and, and we can't really go less than what they have in their budget right now. The secretary of restructure is gonna be a really hard one, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know. But I also don't want to, you know, the elementary takes a huge 3 FTE hit with this list too. Like Jeff said, at the finance committee meeting on Friday, what I have left to cut as far as teaching FTE is gonna impact programming, so it's gonna be, need to be a decision of what elective kind of content area we no longer offer. Because I've got one business teacher, I've got one shop teacher, one ag teacher, I've got a 1.2 or 3, maybe 1.4 art with Zim doing construction, so there's, there are some hard decisions that need to be make, made if we're making more FTE reductions. I, I was the one who suggested cutting back six assignments in my building last year, and what I found out was, when it came time to build the schedule, I couldn't do most of those that I had hoped to be able to do, just because kids have to go somewhere, they have to be in a class, so. Another option to look at, but it's gonna require some negotiations with teachers, is maybe looking at how we can do the middle school, high school schedule across the board, but the way the contract is written right now with percentages for prep time and percentage for supervision, percentages for instructional time, I can't make many changes from what we're doing with our current sub period schedule without violating the teacher contract, so. So six period, I, you know, or sorry, the, the four day school week, I'm not really sure, from my end of things, we figured out, and we, I think we would be fine. Exactly what it looks like, I think there are more things operationally for the whole district that are gonna have to be figured out necessarily than what we do with kids every day.
The, the 1.0 adds this teacher, that's solely elementary?
No, that was, that was a secondary add, so we wrote the adds this grant to, to add an adds this person.
Yep.
And I advertised that when I found out that the grant had been, that we got the grant. And I got a couple of applicants, but in my mind, I'd rather eliminate that and make that cut when we haven't had those services, than to bring those services in and then maybe have to go in the next year, so it's, yeah. Plus, there's a whole lot of figuring out we would have had to have done, there would have been a lot of work put, put into place to figure out what that was gonna look like, so in my mind, that was a fairly easy reduction in my building, is to do that before it's even in place.
Yeah, thanks, and that, that's why I asked, because if that was elementary, that's for FTE, of the elementary. I know we don't have it today, but, I don't know. I think we gotta put the four day school week on this list, and get to 700,000 from the 950-ish number, in my opinion. I'll make a motion, that was a little more clear, use this list plus the four day school week at roughly $250,000 a year to that 950-ish number.
And then we'll come back in January or February and narrow it down to 700? Or narrow down to the necessary number we gotta get to, because we have to have a hard number maybe.
We might have more information around January, February.
Do we have enrollment count and everything in the next four weeks?
For enrollment count, for sure, we can never, obviously the legislature won't be in, but this isn't a big year for the legislature anyway, as far as funding, unless they change something, so, plus the federal government may weigh in on some of the total dollars as well, we may have some implications as well.
Of course, you get to fiscal '27, the more clear that number becomes anyway, you'll have 25,000, we'll be halfway through '26. Things you said will clear, of course, you can get to.
Make that motion, all right, Luke on the motion?
I'll second it.
Rodney on the second. Any other discussion that we haven't covered in the last hour and a half?
You know, I think one thing that we didn't bring up about the four day school day, is that they're actually, in a lot of schools and a lot of communities, they used that extra day as like, like a lot of schools use it as like an extra activity day, staff came in, sometimes on some of those days, and they did like, they utilized their school forest and did little extra side things if the kids wanted to participate, or, you know, they, they went to, like, they maybe went on like a field trip, some of those other schools. Some of those other schools, if by some chance down the road or wherever we got to that point, they used it as just like a really kind of fun, extra STEM type learning type day. And they utilized that fourth day or that fifth day, and so it was just a really cool concept, but.
My understanding is that staff will still be here on the fifth day, right?
Yeah, we can't change the staff.
Yeah, but like, but we're utilizing other things and they were doing extra side things.
For a lot of the Friday, or if it, if it is Friday, a lot of Fridays, you know, staff will be here, but we, we have to, you take a look at the calendar to see what that looks like.
Yeah.
And they use them as intervention days also where you have students, parents have to bring them in obviously for extra help, but we have to make sure that we don't go outside of the contract for dealing with prep time versus instructional time and what that means.
We did, essentially, we did that last year in this building with our special ed kids. We had a lot of special ed kids that came in on those Fridays once a month and got some extra help for part of the day, so.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor of taking the list, the recommendation from the finance committee and adding a four day week to that, coming to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be discussed in January or February to be reduced down to seven hundred thousand? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries. I look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Jolynn on the motion. Jody on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. Thank you for coming in today.